We go.
Great, thank you very much. I'm calling to order the planning board meeting of Thursday, September 17th, 2020 for the city of Boulder. It's 6:03 PM. We have a quorum. The first thing I want to do is just turn it over to Jean to explain her role as the moderator and the rules we're under for tonight's virtual meeting. Jean?
Okay, um, can you? Okay, wait, almost there. Very good. Can everybody see my screen? Am I sharing? Great. Okay, um, welcome to the planning board meeting, everyone. We are aiming to keep these meetings respectful and orderly, and with that, we have a couple of items of protocol. So any activities that disrupt, delay, or interfere with the meetings or with the meeting are prohibited, just as it would be if we were meeting in person. The time for speaking or asking questions is limited. So either I or her, the board chair, will recognize members of the community to speak, and we will unmute you or ask you to unmute yourself. Anyone, we need anyone attending to address the board to please use a full name. If your full name is not currently displayed, please change it or send it to me in the chat, and I'm happy to change it for you. Okay, um, no video will be permitted except for board, staff, and applicants, but I don't think we have any applicants tonight. All others will participate by voice only. Harmon I or Cindy, if she's the acting host, will enforce these rules, and we would have to mute anyone who violates the rules. So please don't make us do that. The chat function should only be used for technical issues to communicate with me or Cindy as the host, not for any discussion of any of the items in front of the board tonight, and only staff and board members will be allowed to share screens. When we get to the public, to the open comment, anybody who would like to address the board will use the raise hand function to indicate that you'd like to speak. You should find this easily at the bottom or the top of your screen. I will call on those who have raised hands and unmute them, and as I mentioned, testimony will be by voice only. I don't think we have anybody by, on the phone, but if we did, folks could use star nine to indicate that they would like to speak to the board. When we have open comment, there will be three minutes each to address the board, and I will, if you can keep the screens on, I'll wave a little yellow and red paper to indicate time, 30 seconds and times up. And then, let's see, I think we are not using the Q and A function, and we are not pooling time. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
Great, thank you, Harmon.
All right, then, we're ready to go on to our second matter. Approval of minutes, and Cindy's been busy. We have three sets of minutes. So I'm just going to ask the board for a motion to approve the August 20th, 2020 minutes, and if people have discussion items, we can talk about that after the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the August? Okay, Lisa Smith is making-
Sorry, I'll move to approve the August. What was the date again, Harmon?
20th.
20th minutes for Planning Board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Sarah Silver seconded it. I'll take a roll call vote here, starting with David Ensign.
Aye.
And then Sarah.
Aye.
And John Gerstle. John said aye. And Lisa.
Aye.
And Peter.
Aye.
And Lupita.
Aye.
And I say aye, so we're gonna, we're gonna approve the August 20th minutes by a seven to nothing count. Now, I'll take a motion to approve the August 27th minutes. John Gerstle making the motion. Any second to that?
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, and I think there's something wrong with John's audio.
Yeah, John, if you can get your mic working again, that would be great. So we've got a motion to approve the August 27th, 2020 planning board minutes by Gerstle. It's been seconded by Silver. Well, uh, yeah, I gave it. You can have it this time, Sarah. And David Ensign, a roll call vote?
Aye.
Okay, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lupita?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye, seven to nothing to approve the 27th of August minutes. Finally, the September 3rd, 2020 minutes. Can I get a motion for approval?
I'm moving.
Okay, so moved by David Ensign and seconded by Lupita. The motion is to approve the September 3rd, 2020 minutes. Any discussion at all around that? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, starting with David.
Aye.
Okay, and then Lupita?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye, okay, seven to nothing. We approved those minutes, too. Thank you very much, Cindy. Thanks, Board. Next item is public participation. I don't know if we have any members of the public yet attend on the meeting, but this is the opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about items that are not on the agenda tonight. So these are general interest items that are of interest to the board or to the presenter. You'd have three minutes to speak to any item not on the agenda tonight. Jean, do we have anybody?
We have four attendees for our meeting tonight, but I am not seeing any raised hands yet. So if folks would like to raise the board, or to address the board, please raise your hand now. Okay, looks like-
If I may interrupt, I think we don't actually have a public hearing tonight. So even if they wanted to speak to one of the items on the agenda, they would speak now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, stand corrected. So now is your chance, if you remember the public attending the meeting, now is your chance to speak to anything on the agenda tonight, and it will be your only chance to speak. So if you're here to speak, speak now.
Okay, it looks like Greg Cass would like to speak. So Greg, you, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, and I will start your three minutes.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the chat feature, the raise your hand feature is disabled, so people probably can't raise their hand, so I typed in the chat. So it's possible that members of the public just can't. I'll, I have my own timekeeping, and I'll begin right now. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. And I live behind the restaurant Riverwood Woods. You probably remember me fondly from talking last month. Thanks for your time again. The concerts have continued. Charles has graciously informed me that there is a hearing scheduled. I just want to tell a quick story to add some context to the hearing that's going to be on my birthday, November 5th, that I will most certainly be attending. This Mr. Diner renter, leased this property in 2016, knowing full well that he could not have any live music on this property. John's, the previous restaurant, had zero live music because they knew they were not permitted to. He applied to the planning board for a nonconforming use, which was granted, where he promised the town and the neighbors that he would only have periodic music, then would not become a concert venue. As you've read the memo that I've written you, it's arguably a concert venue. Before COVID-19, he hosted four, he hosted music four out of six nights per week. This was in contrast to the zero nights per week that the town code allows in mixed use three. Currently, post COVID-19 or during COVID-19, that is now six nights per week. I have asked him for months to not do that. The other neighbors have called the police multiple times, and in my memo to the board, I have addressed the numerous ways that we've attempted to contact him and his staff. The most pertinent point that I'd like to get across is I asked Mr. Diner, one of the owners, in March or April of this year, and I said, hey, I don't think that you have permission to host concerts every night of the week. He assured me that he did, and began to name drop various people from the town, including, well, I won't name them, but he name dropped people from the town, and then began to brag how he intended to do the same thing out by the reservoir, and was complaining about how whiny the neighbors were out there, trying to get, to prevent him from getting a liquor license. I asked him during that in-person conversation if he planned to comply with his existing obligations to not play live music every night of the week, or if his plan was to just carry on playing live music every night of the week, despite my protests, in the hope that the summer would end before the town finally caught up to him and shut his concerts down. Now, the concerts end September 27th, so I think that we've sort of answered it for ourselves, what's, what's happened. So I know that whether he decides to go out of business, I know he owns and rents multiple other properties. He owns six LLCs registered to his home address. So no matter what happens, the point I'd like to make is, this issue is capable of repetition, yet it evades review. And so if this owner, if Josh Diner is going to, he's perfectly free to host another concert series next summer, and if he starts, it's going to take another four months to put an end to it. And he's, he potentially could do this at other locations as well. So I would just like to have a hearing in November that I look forward to establishing on the record that this is just a continuing issue, and that is the conclusion of my time, and I really appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you, Greg. If anyone else would like to speak during open comment? I'm not sure, I, I, we do have the, um, I, I thought with, with the webinar function that we had a way to raise hand, but if not, please let us know within the chat or the Q and A. We can look at both of those. Okay, Lynn, looks like Lynn would like to speak, and if anyone else would, please message me. Lynn, you can go ahead.
Sorry, I'm late. I was just at a thing with Brett. Ken Karen was talking to the students up at CU on ecosystems. And, I mean, the students, for example, brought up, you know, density in Boulder and how this, how climate change issues, which was, the discussion was about, or the virus or whatever, affect, um, the way land use. This is why this is my favorite board. I'm not just sitting back. I've run for the board in the past. I'm trying my best, but more that, that I see, that people are being displaced from evictions and from homelessness and from, oh, the delay, you don't have to pay your rent until December. Okay, well, what's going to happen in December? Everything is always assuming, oh, well, we'll have a vaccine by then. Well, maybe we won't. You know, maybe we won't have a vaccine for a decade. Maybe we'll never have a vaccine. Maybe we'll have one next week. Who knows? We need to go on what we're, what's happening now, and we need to be agile and adaptive. And I was just stunned that it was four to four on the occupancy situation. And what fascinates me, and I've got to talk to the CU, next time Brett holds something, I got to ask the CU students, they're asking us what to do, and I'm asking them, I don't get it, myself. I don't get why people that were on the better Boulder side of things for more density and for transit-oriented development and, and will tour with the environment with the transportation department in Denver, how those people are so out of touch. And Jared Polis recommending that we lift the occupancy limit till March, May, it's May. It's stunning to me that you could think it could be more expensive to live in tighter spaces. I think it's all about parking largely, but parking isn't happening anymore, right? Because people aren't going to the office anymore. You can't go to the office anymore. You can't go to the football game anymore. Yes, people are driving around a bit, but they aren't driving to the levels that they have in the past. And so why you people are approving Olive at 15th and Canyon for a third story when it's two stories by right does not make sense to me. That's infuriating that we're going on that course when we've got to be downshifting, that we're approving an office park out in Flatirons in East Boulder when people aren't even going to the office. What gives here? I just want, I just want some answers. Talk about it. Talk it up. All I hear after these meetings and after people speak endlessly at city council, nobody says anything. There's no interactivity in this community, and it needs to open up. So you disagree, it's not the end of the world. But at least talk it up. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Lynn. Anybody else who would like to address the board tonight? Okay, I am seeing no other messaging in Q and A chat or raised hands.
Can I just ask a question of Charles? When, and that November, is that November hearing that Mr. Cass brought up in front of Planning Board?
It is. It will be a public hearing before the planning board, in which the board will be asked to consider whether or not River and Woods is operating consistent with the adopted development agreement and operations plan for the use review that was granted.
Okay, great. And could you, in the memo, whatever you write for us, just give some background on how use reviews generally are enforced? That'd be really helpful. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, Jean.
Okay.
Then I'm going to close the public participation matter on the agenda and move to the fourth agenda item, which is discussions, discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. There's only one matter at hand. It's the call-up item for standard wetland permit, WET 2020-00013, Northern Water Project Slope Stabilization at Boulder Reservoir. This decision may be called up by Planning Board owner before September 17th, 2020, which is today. So are there any planning board members who wish to ask any questions about this, of staff, or to call it up? Okay, that matter won't be called up. Then I'm going to turn it over to the fifth matter, which is the meat of our agenda tonight, which is the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan Scenario Testing. So I think I will turn over the floor to Charles Farrow, and Charles, you can introduce the item.
So I'm going to actually turn it over to Kathleen King. She is the project manager for the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, and she'll be presenting staff's options tonight. So take it away, Kathleen.
Great, thank you. It is great to see everyone. I have a presentation, so I'm going to pull that up and share my screen. Let's see. Jean, can you give me a thumbs up if you see the screen? Great, okay. So, good evening. I'm Kathleen King from Comprehensive Planning, and I'm excited to be with you tonight to talk about the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. This project is moving into an important and exciting phase of work, so I think we're going to have a great discussion tonight. If it's okay with the group, I'd like to go through the whole presentation first, and then answer any questions about the material after. Sound good? Okay, thanks. Okay, so tonight, we're going to be talking about some big issues, and I'll describe the great challenge of this project. We'll look at some land use concepts, and then we'll talk about scenario testing and the next phase of work and engagement. The feedback that we're really hoping for tonight is directed towards the indicators or for what Planning Board believes will be critical to decision-making when we consider land use changes, and your thoughts about engagement during this next phase of work, especially since we expect that we will not be gathering in groups, and that most of our engagement will be taking place virtually. So first, the big challenge. As you know, the purpose of subcommunity planning is to implement the citywide goals of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan at a local level. And our citywide goals really are not small. The city wants to increase the amount of affordable housing options in Boulder. We're hoping to reduce single occupant vehicle trips and create 15-minute neighborhoods. The city wants to establish resiliency in the face of climate change, protect our small and local businesses, and foster places and networks for the creation of art and celebration of local cultures. And it's really, it's a lot. When we met last fall, Planning Board reviewed the inventory and analysis report that asked the question, does the East Boulder Sub-Community have the capacity to make a contribution to each of these goals? And what we found was, for each of the six focus areas, there is opportunity in the subcommunity to make a contribution. But I think, as you are all well aware, the solutions here are not simple. A contribution of one goal has an impact on the success or failure of another. So we're now at a point in this process where we need to start to examine the range of choices for the future of East Boulder and determine which of these goals should be prioritized for this part of town, and how much potential change can we accommodate without negatively impacting our other goals. One of the most impactful tools to implement some of those citywide goals is land use planning. So just to reorient everyone to the subcommunity, the study area is outlined in the red dash line. We're looking at the Arapahoe Corridor on the south, Foothills Parkway on the west, and roughly 63rd Street on the east. And some of the major landmarks in the area are the hospital, which is right over here, Valmont City Park, the airport is up here. This is San Lazaro Mobile Home Park, which is our only residential community inside the boundaries of the subcommunity, and then Flatiron Business Park here, and then this is the Valmont Power Plant. And so what we're looking at is the BVCP land use map for East Boulder, and I just want to highlight that there's, there's sometimes confusion about this map. This is not an existing land use map, but it's intended to depict future land uses as described in the Comprehensive Plan. So this plan currently envisions that over half the area will be industrial land uses. And there's a significant amount of designated open space and parks land, and then some land that is categorized as public, and then we have just a few community business parcels. Over the past few months, the East Boulder Working Group has been meeting on Zoom to consider what an alternative future for East Boulder might look like, and what kinds of land use changes would support citywide goals and visions for East Boulder. As a reminder, the subcommunity planning process is committed to operating in the collaborate space of our engagement framework. This is the highest level of engagement, and this working group takes on a lot of responsibility for tackling the challenges of the project. The working group is one of the key elements of the engagement program for this effort, and so our staff team has invested a lot of time and resources to supporting them, and in turn, they've been an extremely dedicated group, and I think have been working really well together to make important progress on this project. And I also want to mention that two members of the working group are part of the city's Community Connectors Program, and they have been essential to our ability to engage residents of the San Lazaro Mobile Home Park and, as well as the Vista Village Community, which is just outside our study area boundary. Using community input, the group has studied the subcommunity and gone through a couple cycles of iteration to develop three concepts for alternative futures that represent a range of choices. These concepts will move into scenario testing, so we can begin to understand what the impacts of land use changes could be. So I'm going to walk through the land use concepts pretty quickly, but if there are any questions about the approach to these or group thinking behind the options, we can definitely come back to these during the discussion. So the first concept that we will test is the BVCP land use mix, which represents a no change from the comp plan map, and will consider what the impacts could be on our citywide goals if we made no land use changes. The first alternative future concept, we'll test a couple of changes at key nodes in East Boulder. Of the three concepts, this one has the least amount of change and adds in some new land uses. Medium-density residential, mixed-use industrial, and a new category called mixed-use TOD, which imagines a mix of residential and commercial uses oriented around a future mobility hub at 55th and Arapahoe. You'll see this land use change is consistent in all three concepts, and we'll be diving into the details of that area with the consultant team as part of the ongoing 55th and Arapahoe Station Area Master Plan. The second concept looks at testing some high-density residential and mixed-use categories, and increases the amount of community industrial in the area. Changes are focused along the major corridors of the subcommunity, Arapahoe and 55th Street. This concept will also test the potential for changes at the Valmont Power Plant site. The third concept will test the most significant amount of change of the three options. This concept identifies an area for potential multifunctional green space in high hazard and conveyance zones of the floodplain, incorporates a lot of mixed uses, has some high-density residential areas, and identifies some zones for community industrial. This concept worked to pair access to outdoor recreation and park space with opportunities for residential development. For each of these alternative future concepts, what we'll be looking at in the next phase of work is really all about the proposed land use mix. We will test how much of each kind of land use, when applied in East Boulder, will either contribute to or negatively impact citywide goals. So here's how those three options are stacking up when compared to the current BVCP land use map. Concept one has some moderate changes, but adds in mixed use. Concept two proposes the most amount of land dedicated to residential uses of the three, and concept three reserves the least amount of land for industrial uses and the most amount for open space. In our next phase of work, we will be testing each of those concepts against a set of indicators or metrics to help us evaluate how different land uses can impact our citywide goals. To accomplish this, we're using a software product from Esri called ArcGIS Urban. Boulder is one of a handful of beta cities using this technology. This has allowed us to work directly with the team at Esri, and I really have to give a shout out to our staff members, Kalani Paoa in Planning, and Jenny Imick from our Information Resources team, who have been working really hard to configure this program, so that the models we developed truly represent the intricacies of our zoning code, land use program, and some of the targets for citywide goals. It's really, it's a very sophisticated program, and I think it will be a great communications and engagement tool, as well as help us use data to make decisions in the future. The team is still working through a few kinks, so I'm not going to be able to demonstrate the model tonight, but I am going to pull up a very short video to show you what some of the tools are. The video is, it's a promotional video from Esri, so it feels a little bit commercial, but I think it will be worth watching to give you an idea of the program. And if everyone can put their microphone on mute, that really helps with the audio. So we'll see. I'm gonna hope it works. Here we go.
Cities today face major challenges in meeting sustainability goals, housing equity, and climate change resiliency. Meanwhile, the contemporary planning process is often viewed as a complicated and fragmented workflow. City planners, architecture firms, and city officials often use disparate, unorganized, and time-consuming workflows. Information is not seen across planners, developers, and city leaders, causing the urban planning process to take a lot more time, effort, and money. And unfortunately, these workflows are often limited to 2D maps, lacking the ability to visualize and understand the city at the street level, which can help make smarter planning decisions. That's why Esri has created a 3D web application that streamlines all these workflows for a more efficient urban planning process. ArcGIS Urban is a 3D web experience that orchestrates urban development and planning workflows by streamlining the creation and sharing of land use and zoning plans alongside the review of proposed development projects. This helps all organizations involved in the planning lifecycle to coordinate efforts more efficiently using ArcGIS Urban's single-city-wide view. By distinguishing projects by size, time, and even development status, Esri's smart city planning tool makes it easier to track building development and infrastructure. Planners can see where projects are, understand the proposal in its spatial context, and explore important indicators related to environmental constraints. ArcGIS Urban can support your local regulations, enabling planners to offer land use and zoning scenarios in a 3D context and provide downstream reporting for key capacity metrics like household units, trip generation, parking, and emissions.
I'm just going to pause it there real quick, because this is demonstrating what some of those indicators are and what we'll be looking at in the Boulder model when we go through this process.
ArcGIS Urban provides an interactive overview to coordinate the planning process, improving data consistency and organization of planning teams. Planners can easily move traditional policy making towards a more analytical and scenario-driven process. Sharing review incoming development proposals with stakeholders and the community for valuable feedback, and measure performance indicators citywide, accounting for individual plans and projects. ArcGIS Urban helps organize city and regional planning initiatives for a more holistic urban planning process, so that planning teams can streamline collaboration with local developer and architecture firms, and deliver community engagement by providing a way for citizens to review and comment on plans and projects over the web. Become more proactive and less reactive in your planning process. Simplify projects' collaboration across internal agencies and community stakeholders, and try ArcGIS Urban today.
So we are, we're gonna, we're gonna try it. I will move on. Let's see, here we go. And so as the video describes, we will be able to look at each of these alternative future concepts, and considering some indicators, see how they might affect capacities and performance of the East Boulder Sub-Community. We'll also be able to model these changes- We'll also be able to model these changes in 3D, allowing community members to understand how land use, how land use changes can affect the built environment. So while there's probably a lot of metrics we would love to test, it's important that we limit our testing to the most critical indicators that will help community members make a decision about whether or not a land use change would positively contribute to the future of the sub community and the city. And these 12 indicators represent the metrics that the Arc Urban tool can generate for each concept. So the land use mix indicator will assess how much area of each land use category is designated in each scenario versus the untrend or no change scenario. A population indicator will identify how land use changes increase or decrease population projections versus the no change BVCP scenario. Population projections can give the community insight into potential infrastructure and/or service needs for potential land use changes. And the households indicator will provide a projection of how many new households can be accommodated based on land use changes. Housing units will provide community members an understanding of the potential number of additional housing units. This projection will vary based on the differing amount of residential building types proposed in each scenario. A jobs indicator will measure the potential increase or decrease in the number of jobs based on our scenarios and can also be used to gain greater insight into housing needs, retail opportunities, and transportation needs under each scenario. The energy use indicator will provide an understanding about how each mix of uses in the scenarios can impact energy use. This supports the Climate Mobilization Action Plan to understand how our land use decisions can impact energy use. Calculating potential CO2 emissions based on land uses in each scenario will help describe if and to what degree each land use concept can contribute to citywide goals related to reducing CO2 emissions. And using the walk access model developed as part of the 2019 pedestrian plan, we will identify how each scenario could improve or degrade walk access in East Boulder. The parking indicator will assess the amount of space needed to accommodate parking under each scenario and will allow the community to compare how much space in East Boulder is allocated to parking today versus a potential alternative future. Changing land uses can have major implications for water service and infrastructure needs, so the water use indicator will provide a basic understanding of how each scenario may increase or decrease water use in East Boulder. And then finally, the solid waste indicator provides a comparison of waste generated under each scenario and allows the community to understand the implications of land uses on solid waste generation and management. We've looked at how these indicators align with our focus areas for the sub community plan and the draft vision statements developed by the working group. We will use the indicators to compare impacts across each of the concepts and share those concepts and impacts with the community. So this brings us to our next big engagement window, which we are planning, planning on for winter 2020, 2021. During this window, we will be sharing the outcomes of the scenario testing, the 3D models showing some land use changes, and we'll be using those indicators and performance measures to ask community members to make some trade-offs. What we know is that the city has some really ambitious goals for the future, but that not all goals can be achieved simultaneously in the same place. So for East Boulder, we'll ask community members to really make some hard choices and prioritize how these goals get implemented in this sub community. And I think this is perhaps where our process may be different from past planning exercises that the community has participated in. When we bring the test concepts out to the community, we're really not asking people to select a favorite or tell us what they do or don't like about each concept. Instead, we are providing them with data about how changes could impact the sub community and the city, and asking them to really make decisions about how land use planning should be used to implement goals. This is part of our commitment to a collaborative process, and we're hoping that the resources and tools we will provide can encourage significant participation to provide the working group with important community input that will help them make recommendations about the future. Because we're anticipating that we will still be in this digital engagement space, we're planning some virtual meetings, we'll be creating videos, and hosting a community questionnaire to get answers about those trade-offs. We're anticipating that this engagement window would be open in November. Following that window, we'll return to Planning Board in 2021 to discuss the results of the testing and the community feedback. Staff in the working group will be working with you to develop a preferred land use concept in late winter and spring of next year. So this is a super exciting time for this project, and we're moving into a process with the community boards and council where important decisions will be made. So I'm really looking forward to your thoughts, and I welcome a good discussion tonight. And that is all for the presentation. I'm really, I'm hoping to get your feedback on indicators or metrics that you think will be critical for making decisions. And if you have thoughts about our engagement strategy, especially since we're going to be operating mostly online, that would also be really helpful. And I can answer any questions also.
Thanks a lot Kathleen, that was great, appreciate that. You can take the screen down so we can all see each other, and I'll take care of those key questions.
Great.
Okay, so again, thank you for a great presentation. I'd like to open it up to Planning Board to ask questions of Kathleen and staff. You can feel free to raise your hand. Sarah?
Kathleen, that was great, really appreciate it. I'm hoping you can sort of unpack a little bit for us. What is underneath these 12 indicators? Like, I was really struggling to understand what is being measured with each of these indicators? How, what are the pieces that go into the indicators? Okay, I found it, it was, I sort of understood what, what the, the data you collect will help you assess, but I didn't understand what was going into the data, and it was just very vague. So I'm hoping you can unpack that a little bit for us.
Yeah, I'm actually going to ask Kalani to jump in because she has really been working on all of the configurations that create the calculation and input for, for those indicators.
Hi, good evening. Sarah, did you have a particular one you'd like to go over? If, if you want to know?
Yeah, sure, yeah, so I would, I would go, I would like to go over households and household units. First, I don't know why those are different. And secondly, like, how, how, given, given our objective of addressing affordability objectives, both for low and moderate income and middle income, it was not clear to me how you would capture that in this sort of vague households and household units.
That's a, that's a really good question. So households are based off of the overall population projection, and so that's based on the overall square footage of a certain, of housing units, the certain amount of housing units that go in there. It'll be helpful if Kathleen would post, bring up the screen with the urban build out on a couple of the scenarios. We had run a test model, there's one of Alpine Balsam in there that I had put in as a test. We can use that, and I can talk a little bit through what those mean in square footage, how that relates to households versus housing units. Would that be helpful?
We'll find out.
So on this particular one, so this was a quick, we, so we're configuring the background of this, and it's all of those data point inputs. So for example, jobs are based on the type of industry and square footage. So if we have square footage, say we have 10,000 square feet in the proposal of retail space, and it's 1,000 square feet generally per job, that gives us 10 retail jobs, that's how we get to the jobs number. It's based on square footage. The same goes for the housing, but housing units is different than households in the sense that this program allows us to look at a range of housing unit types, what would go into the housing stock. So anything from single family to multifamily apartments and flats. And there are general numbers for our region average housing sizes. So for example, in this one, the yellow stacked blocks in the center of that property there, those are multifamily units in, and there's a square footage for those. And so that square footage is divided by the average space on what a flat is for this region, which is approximately 1,100 square feet, is what a flat runs regionally. So that gives us a housing unit for that one, and then the little blocks at the back, those are attached, single family attached units. And so those are divided, each one of those is one housing unit, and those are classified as single family attached. So when we look at those numbers that this would generate, it would tell us we've got this many apartments, this many single family units, this many group quarter units and other things like that. So that's what the housing unit number is, and that tells us how many new housing units we can expect. Now the household?
I'm sorry, just so, I want to make sure I'm understanding. So it's, 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 it's a, based on if you were to use this land use in this space, and this space is X number of square feet, how would, how could you divide it among certain different types of housing units?
Exactly, and it's based on our by right zoning code right now. It, so that's what the, the rules in the program give you, those 3D envelopes, and that's where the square footage comes from, based on our zoning code.
I'm gonna think about that.
You see a lot of hands?
I know other people are thinking.
Which, if, if there's anybody else that has a question?
Yeah, well, while Sarah's thinking, let's go to Lou Pita, she had her hand up.
Thank you, Harmon. So I was thinking on the actual inputs that you're using, because I can see the, the unit part, but I'm wondering where that division came from. I mean, you know, when you did the validation of the program, I'm wondering, you know, if we were to want to promote things like, you know, housing for, say, a younger demographic, how does that come across in the inputs to your program? Is that something that is, is possible? And if you do, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, so I'm gonna go out on a limb. Lou Pita says, if we have a younger demographic and they're looking for smaller units?
Yeah, young professionals, and I'm, I'm really not thinking like college students. I'm talking about after graduation. So I'm wondering if in the, in the modeling that you guys have developed, you have looked into that kind of granular information? So to know what kind of housing that would, you know, would appeal more for those, for those demographics?
We could program in, there's several different building types, and you can do a proposal. So we have what is the baseline standards that are based off of census data or NACs data, other data that we get. But we could propose a building type that is geared to be smaller units in that sense, and program that into land use areas, if that is something that Kathleen's group and some of those scenarios she's looking at. So there is options to tweak that data in a way that is more custom. And we always have specialty kinds of either, and we might get to have to propose a new land use district or a new zoning code district. So that's also an option in here, is to do these proposed kind of one-off scenarios that could tweak the demographic or the occupants.
Yeah, I'm just, just in closing for this set of questions is, the idea is we're trying to find ways on how you can proactively kind of promote something like affordability. And I think that's one of the ways, if we look at certain demographics being able to be here, we definitely have to account for that kind of, you know, spaces. So I'm hoping that it becomes easier to, we can kind of say, oh yeah, all we need to do is to tweak this part of the program to kind of get us a better sense that this would be more appropriate for this or more appealing. Thank you for your answers.
Yes.
David?
Yeah, just to expand on Sarah's question a little bit. So when you do decide to present one of these concepts with a, with a certain potential number of housing units, potential number, amount of business square footage, that doesn't, you don't choose to go to the max intensity density that would, you, you, you use other factors to determine how you're going to select a mix to present, right? Is that correct? Because we never build out to max intensity density, you know? So I just wonder maybe if you could just say how, how you kind of think of that.
So right now, the way that the program, we've been configuring the program is to the by right zoning envelopes, the development envelopes.
Okay.
There, there is an option to apply, just like, because this is a citywide model. So the, the appendix J map, areas where we have the height modifications, those are kind of regionally constrained areas that allow for height above 35 feet. So those areas have that, that kind of layer where it allows the envelope to be more than what the zoning code envelope is. So you're right, it doesn't, David, go to the max edge of the envelope. Generally speaking, there's a kind of a net area factor for land use planning and for zoning that includes things like circulation, you know, landscaping, all of those other things. You, you can't do 100% lot coverage and get what you're looking for, and that's embedded and programmed into this program to account for that.
And possibly economic conditions as well, that would discourage people from necessarily building as much as they possibly could. I mean, there's, there's, you know, demand and things like that to take into account, I suppose. Is that correct?
Well, of course, this does not measure the economic realities, this program, but what it does do is provide the, the data that if that was something that was going to be done, could, someone could look at and, and start to look at the financial feasibility of a proposal, what the impacts were on, on the amount of infrastructure improvements, or would the housing, is there enough housing unit and economy of scale to actually realize some of the projects? So it gives a good set of information to make informed decisions, you'd say.
So I'm gonna jump in here for a sec. So it, it would be fair to characterize this modeling work as being based on the, the land use potentials of the zoning. And so for example, there's no, you know, as we look at household units or land use mix, there's, as much as we concentrate on affordable housing, there's no mapping of affordable housing because that would require actually going out and finding what the rent is on each and every unit, and that's, that's not how this program works.
You're right, and there's, there's, this is a gross numbers type of program. And I think if we were gonna try to get an estimate of what the, what would's the potential of affordable housing units without the financial realities, we could, we would get a rough, a gross number of units, and we could just take off the top of that and go, hey, 20% if we applied our standards to affordability, and we could get a number of units that would be affordable, but that may not be financially feasible, you're correct.
So, so for another example, like in your eighth category for, for the indicators, the walk access, you know, it's not considering that there's this cool new coffee shop that makes that neighborhood more walkable. It's saying, here are land uses that provide essential services, and here are pedestrian paths, and then we measure distances from them. The computer can crunch all of that and come up with a general walk access notion.
Well, the walk access, I'll actually, gonna hand this back to Kathleen, because the walk access is not part of this program. It's a special custom dashboard indicator that has been developed.
Okay.
Yeah, so the walk access model was developed as part of the pedestrian plan update, and it does actually consider destinations, and it And it does actually consider destinations and it, um, I think the destinations are weighted based on, um, there were like 10 key destinations that, uh, the community was surveyed about and, and described as, um, places that they would want to be able to walk to. So coffee shops is one of those grocery stores, um, things like that. And so that's, that's the model we'll be using for that.
Okay, great, all right, any other questions?
Well, I actually have, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a question and, and, and maybe, maybe your answer to Harmon was the answer, but I, I think this challenge, uh, when looking at the breakdown of land use in the, that, uh, in the, in the graphic that Kathleen was nice enough to send out earlier today, um, uh, I'm, I, there's not a whole lot of residential that's developed in this area. And I realize that we're trying to protect industrial areas, but we're also going to lose a lot of industrial area based on this same graph. Um, so that's just a framing. When we talk about the inputs for the residential that could come out of this process, I'm wondering if we can start at how do we, uh, build, how do we seed really diverse housing stock at the very beginning of this process? Um, I was really, um, I, when I read through, uh, the, uh, the middle income housing, uh, report from, it wasn't the survey, but the report, um, what jumped out at me was that the, one of the gaps for middle income, uh, families is the for sale gap, that, that they can afford the rent, but there's a for, there's a for sale gap. And I, I feel like, um, a, and we know that one of the challenges for Boulder Housing Partners is being able to afford the land that they need to buy to build on. So I'm just wondering if it's possible as we think about the inputs into the households and housing units, can, can this prop, can, can the tool you, you're using from the get-go focus on the types, you know, setting aside some land for permanently affordable housing and focusing on, or, or making sure that included in the inputs are the types of housing that would address the middle income gap?
I, I think that we can, because the way I'm trying to work through how, how I would do that in the program. And Kathleen, I think that that into the whole group is, um, so we have the ones that are out of, out of our zoning code and our land use code. These are kind of the rules. And we have the option in here is to provide proposed, you know, either land uses or building types, new things that we think that we might want to see somewhere. I think that we could create if it's, um, like a, either a, a land use zone that has a, like you were saying, is that a, uh, an affordable housing area that that one, that particular area is earmarked? And that, um, there's building types that might be specific to that. The missing metal is very, it's a very specific set of building typologies across the board, um, from attached, single family attached to kind of small scale flats and, you know, fourplexes and that type of thing. We could program those building types into this program um, as a proposed option, um, if it's within some of the, um, the land use scenarios that Kathleen has, you know, that the groups have been putting in there. I think that that's an option to do something like that and create those little specialty, sets of information and then to customize the inputs on, like Lupita was saying, maybe they're smaller units, we would, instead of flats being 1,100 square feet, that's the average. Maybe it's 700. I, I don't know the number exactly, but I think that there's room for that in this program to do a bit of that.
That'd be, I think that'd be, I, I don't know if I'm getting ahead of the indicator question, but I, I think that that would be, um, a very different way of doing business of, of our Boulder Valley, uh, sub-community planning. That might be a very interesting new way to try things, which is like a lawyer, you're starting from where you want to end up and then working back through your decision tree of how you would get there with arguments you might make. Uh, and, um, given our goals for affordable housing, I think starting with that and trying to work back would, could be a very interesting uh, component of this scenario planning.
Yeah, I really like. Reverse engineering too. Sorry, just, I think we're on the same, sort of on the same wavelength because I'm, I'm also thinking that this is reverse engineering. Do you start where, where you want to end and then you design to get there?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I really like the approach Kalani of, um, using the building type because we can integrate the building type in, um, in different land use categories. So we can show it in high-density residential, we could show it in some mixed use areas as well. Um, so that we don't have, you know, an area that's the affordable housing area so that it's integrated with other neighborhoods. So I think that that's, that's a great idea and a really good approach.
Yeah, we could do that because then it would, um, the, one of the purposes of the program is really to tell you how each scenario performs. How does it perform on housing? How does it perform on jobs? How does it perform on the environment? And so if we can program those building types, we can look at how it performs on just raw, raw numbers on how many affordable housing units you would get in that scenario, if we can tinker with the building type portion.
Lupita again?
Yes, in fact, I, I think we're getting closer to one of the things that Sarah and I have discussed in the past is this integration.
She froze.
Oh no.
Lupita, you froze.
To promote integration of different communities, that would be extremely helpful. And I'm now, I'm thinking, what are the metrics that you have? Because you have 12 criteria and I'm sorry, you named them something. I just think of it, these are my inputs or, you know, that criteria that I'm working with, these are my parameters. Is there one that will reflect something like that with the mixing piece? Because I think that would be one, um, goal and objective that is not so clear me, to me there, that that would definitely be to me, how you build community. You bring, you build community by bringing people together, especially people who are different because that's how people get to know each other and, and, and become to accept. We're not everybody, you know, does the same things on Sunday mornings. Not everybody eats the same kind of food. Not everybody walks, you know, uh, at a certain time. There are different reasons for people doing different things. And as we get to know people who do things differently, we get to appreciate better. And therefore that's when we finally build community. I, I'm looking so forward to something like this. And I think this too may be one way. I just don't know, you know, how, how, how much latitude you have, how much flexibility you have within that because I didn't program this, but that would be one thing that we'd like to find out where is that possibility?
I, I think that those numbers, we can get those numbers out of the system, uh, exported out. Those, I think I can, I need to talk to our IR, um, department. We're still figuring out this program too, as we configure it and put things into it and see what it's capable of and kind of run it down the track a little bit. Um, but one of the ways that that might come out is the, the land use mix is one way that you might see the percentage of housing and what might be affordable in there is in that breakdown. But I need to see if we can extract that. There's, there are some things, it's, you know, as we're working through, we're finding what the limitations are to this, working with Esri to see if that's something that we can, um, that they're improving immediately or if it's on the list of approved, you know, things that improvements they're making.
So if nobody's got a direct follow-up to what Lupita, the train Lupita and Sarah have been, uh, on, I want to jump in for a second. Does, David, did you want to follow up on that?
I want you to go first, mine's not directly related.
Okay, fine. So, so I know this is, this is a little bit beyond the, um, the scope of what we're actually talking about here. But I, I do want to make a point about, um, how this system or a system like it might be used in the future. And, and that's that, to start, I think planning professionals, land use professionals, what separates them from most people is that they look at a zoning map and they see potentials. You know, if there's a vacant lot that everybody's been walking their dog on for 20 years, the neighborhood sees it as this vital, you know, gathering place that the planner, for better or for worse, you know, if this vacant lot's privately owned and zoned, multi-family residential, pretty much sees an apartment building there. And this planning program, this, this thing that Esri's got going is sort of the ultimate in that potential view. And it's, it's using cold inputs that you don't have to go out into the community and poll people and find out what's going on on the ground because it's based on, you know, aggregating and pulling apart and understanding and mapping potentialities and then the interactions between them. We're trying to figure out in this exercise, kind of what's the likely outcome if we, if we allow certain changes that are going to create these different sets of potentialities depending upon which program we use. But not, not which Esri program we use, which one of the three alternative programs we choose. But there are details in the way that the land use code is written that actually can sabotage our best hopes for this. And, and a perfect example that comes straight to mind is the amount of office, the number of office uses that are allowed in industrial zones. And if you look at the, the comments that so many of the East Boulder Working Group members made, there was concern that office uses will drive up rents, kill affordability. And, you know, to have affordable housing and actual industrial manufacturing, you know, laboratory kind of stuff is less likely to drive up costs, more likely to leave us with the kind of place we have now where, you know, cheesemakers and brewers and sculptors and musicians and studios are allowed to exist because of the cheaper rent. So I think that it would be really doing half a job to just look at the potential in three different scenarios and pick the one that's the most likely to create the, um, the world that we want. And, and if there's some way to, after the three scenarios are played out and, and decided on, to start doing some on-the-ground data collection to see, you know, first establish a baseline, how many square feet of creative space do we have? How many square feet of industrial space do we have? How many square feet is being used for class A office, class B office and stuff? And then be able to come back and see 10 years later, how did choosing scenario two in this exercise change that on-the-ground scenario that, that we're all actually now living with? And did the rents go up and is there more affordable housing? Because otherwise I think it really is too cold of a planning exercise to just set a set of sort of potentials and see which one we like the looks of. And, and by seeing how the landscape actually changes, you know, we might find that what we did with picking a scenario that created a lot more focus on, say, light industrial, we ended up with a ton of office space. And maybe the solution was going into the use table and not allowing as much, as many office uses in the light industrial zoning district so that we would have gotten more industry. And that the program wasn't at fault, it was the land use code which caused the problem because we focused on a land use district that nonetheless allowed stuff that doesn't really look like what it says it is. So anyway, that's, that's my long speech, sorry, sorry to take up so much time. But I, I think that there needs to be some granularity and some actual data collection on how it's working, if, if we're going to, you know, really gain any benefit from this.
I, I don't, I think I heard a question in there, but I have some.
No, there was no, there was no.
Kalani, I can't believe you just did that to Harmon, the king.
Harmon, it does do that. That's the beauty in the program is, um, that's what I noticed because it does take the uses. The uses are in the, say in the allowed, I plugged in all the uses that are allowed. And you're right, there were a wide variety of uses in industrial that seemed not quite industrial. But the beauty, I think, in the program is, is then we can go in, into the scenarios and actually ask ourselves what kind of, because you can plug in this use instead of this use, this use instead of this use and really start to get in there and tinker with those uses in a way that, um, provides the granularity and what the, what that, what the activation looks like instead of that. And the, um, long-term, the way that this program ideally would work is that, um, it would monitor implementation. It would monitor as new housing projects come in, you'd have your target that the plan adopted, say the plan adopted a target of 750 housing units, X number of businesses. As, as, um, projects were approved and came online, that number started to, you would see a comparison, a dashboard of, this is how close we are to getting to our goals. This is, with this project, it would do this for our goals. And it, it's, the movement in this program is to take us into what you're talking about, a dynamic monitoring of the environment. Do we start to achieve some of the things instead of saying, hey, we set something up that maybe didn't work right?
So now let me, the, so, so the idea is that you don't need to do a full inventory of what's out there now because what you're going to do is once it's in place, you start plugging in every new change, every project, and you can see what the trends are.
Yeah, you can see the trends over time.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
And then you can also tinker the use tables in there, what you would want allowed in the proposed versions.
That's, that's great.
I would say kind of the other half of, of your message, um, about that kind of holistic approach to an inventory of the site. We, we really did that work in, in the previous phase. And, um, we certainly have all those baseline measurements about rents for different, um, types of uses. Um, we have the square footages, things like that. But we also did do that kind of on-the-ground work to find out, um, why people like spending time there and learned that in Flatiron Business Park, it's much cooler than downtown and people appreciate the breeze that comes off of the creek in that area. And so there's, there's definitely pieces of, um, our inventory phase of work that I think are going to be really important to revisit as we, um, get the cold hard data out. We need to kind of reference back to the intangible things, um, to make sure that some of the changes that we're looking at or potentially proposing, still, still, I think, keep pieces of the character of that area that, um, people really love about it and I think are afraid of losing about it.
Right, right. I'm going to call in David now.
Oh, okay, yeah, um, so just that, um, graph that broke down, uh, the, uh, uh, land use versus alternative future concepts by acreage. I just, um, wanted to ask about that because I felt like looking at it just by acreage may not tell the whole story when we're actually dealing with square footage of uses in the end. And we found out that, um, on the same acreage in a project that we saw, gosh, was it last week? Uh, you could double the amount of industrial, commercial space, uh, on that site, uh, within the current envelope. So we know that we're not fully built out. So, um, I, I've, I felt like, um, looking at just acreage may not, um, tell the whole story. So I wondered if, if I'm, if, is that true or, and would it make sense to kind of also consider, whether we lose potential for the same amount of industrial versus, or, um, residential mixed use and park open space?
Yeah, I think your observation is correct. It's, it's just considering, um, land mass and does not consider building height or, or square footage of structures. But when we look at the scenarios in the model, it will.
Okay, yeah, because I just, when you look at it this way and you see the, you know, the acreage going down in a scenario by 33% for a particular use, it might raise alarms that don't necessarily have to be raised if we think that, well, maybe some of those uses actually might shift into mixed use and maybe some of them would just be solved if you built a slightly denser building on that site. You know, nothing's going to change the first day that the new land use is going to existence anyway. But I just, I felt like there was a potential that alarms could be raised if you just looked at the acreage.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
I think Lisa's been waiting to speak.
Yeah, so just wanted to say how much I appreciate that tool. It's like an even more planetary version of SketchUp. I didn't know if they built it off that backbone or how they created it, but it's pretty cool. I think one of the things I was wondering about or that I appreciate about this tool, and I know it's a new one, and it's something that Harmon touched on others as well, is kind of that flexibility over time. Because as much as zoning is one of the most important tools that we have as planners and one of the best ways that we can manage land use, it also can end up being very constraining over time. And I think we're seeing that right now with the pandemic where things like office space are suddenly not desirable in interesting ways. And we'll kind of see how that unfolds over time. So I know it's a new tool, but how, how do you see that kind of applying? To go off some of the earlier questions, you know, how do you see this allowing both that tracking of use over time? And then also maybe allowing tweaking of the zoning codes? Or, you know, recognizing how people are actually wanting to use buildings or use the land in ways that we can't anticipate right now because we're not in those conditions? And is that something you've thought about with this? And again, I know it's a new tool.
I think it would really be helpful if, to have this discussion with a, with a sample plan to show you some of what's going on in that. Maybe that's something to do at a later date, but just kind of going off what you're asking. Like, long term, I think the, where there's flexibility, where this program does allow the option to kind of flag maybe potential problems is, right now, we've configured it to work with our zoning code, our land use, the information we have on our land use districts and that type of thing. The proposals that Kathleen's working on, those have the option to create new kind of custom building types or new land use districts in there that could have very specific uses, say for the station area. It may have more fine-grained, specific uses that don't really fit the, what's in the, already in the adopted land use code or the zoning code. And this program does flag conflicts. So where you have things like that, it will flag it and say, hey, this does not match what is going on in your, in your land use code or your zoning code, whatever one you're working with, because it does land use plans and it does zoning plans. And I think that the other helpful thing about this, this particular program is the land use section that Kathleen and the East Boulder team is working on, this is a new feature for this program. Before it was zoning only, they've started a new land use feature. That allows us to then look at the land uses, look at the acceptable zoning districts that may be in those land uses too. So I think kind of time and implementation after adoption of the land use changes and then to really examine some of those zoning code districts in there and flag what, what are the right uses, what are the right, what's the expectation on farm bulk scale, that type of thing. So I do think that there's some flexibility in the ability to look at what's working and what isn't working.
Cool. Thank you.
Before I go to Sarah and Lupita, who both have their hands up, I want to give Peter and John, who haven't spoken yet, opportunities to speak. Peter?
Thank you. This is really great and I appreciate this. And if it's in the material, apologies. I've gone through it and I may have missed this part. It's a two-part question. I've heard a lot about, we talk a lot about losing character of an area. How do we get at, and if this is the wrong time to talk about this or ask about this, Harmon, or anyone can stop me, how do we get at the parts, the character that we know we need to evolve from in the area? And that may connect to the fact that the boundary on the east side is the power plant. And my kids always ask, well, why can't we go swimming in that water? I say, well, we cannot.
Super fun site.
So how do we start addressing those concepts? I won't even get into, you know, larger airport questions, but really just kind of thinking about, what do we know we want to, how do we get at? And what's the right time and the right way to, to address what we know we want to move away from in the area? And then, and the way of answering that, you could just instead answer and use the power plant as an example. Now, I know we need the power, but I don't know the status of that facility and, you know, what the plan is.
I, so I think for the first part of your question, I do think sub-community planning is the place to ask those types of questions and really think about the future character of this part of town and what, what we want it to evolve to be. So, yeah, I think this is the right venue. For the power plant, you know, the, the working group members, and we've heard from community members who really want to envision a different kind of use there, a different kind of place there. From kind of the conversations that the city has had with the power plants owned by Excel, the conversations that we've had thus far, we've, we've sort of described some community interest in re-establishing a park for public use there. What we know is, there is a, I thought this might come up, so I wrote it down because I don't really know the right term. There is a, there are two gas combustion turbines that currently operate there. And they are expected to stay online at that site until 2038. So this plan has a 20-year horizon. And I think that it is not a crazy endeavor to start to think about what the next life of that area might be. And it's, it's a long way off, but laying some of the groundwork to continue to have those conversations, I think, would be important. And if we can document some of those ideas in something like a sub-community plan, it will give us some direction over the next 20 years.
Lisa, do you want to jump in on that?
Um, yeah, and I would have to look back for the source of the data. I think one of the challenges with that site, both in terms of being on the record of ownership and then also rehabbing it, which I think we absolutely should do and is something to explore and work with the community on, is that I wasn't joking about the superfund thing. It's not labeled as a superfund site, but it more than likely meets the criteria for a superfund site, which I know about just from when the city was trying to decide whether to try to include the power plant in any acquisition of Excel's assets, which just aggressively increases the cost of any kind of rehab or use of that land. So, and in some ways means it's even more important to, you know, rehab it and make it safer. But that's just something that I would hope that any group would be looking at because the expense will be significant.
So I guess my little follow-up, Peter, to your question is, you asked about the character of the neighborhood. And I think, I think the, you know, the interesting question to Steph that, you know, I think might be worth hearing their answer to is, how do you think the, the idea is about maintaining this neighborhood's character can be, you know, how can they be integrated into this model? You know, does, do you think of some of these, these indicators, these 12 indicators, as having a connection to the preservation or the change in the character of the neighborhood? And did that factor into your thinking in selecting those indicators?
Let's say that the indicators are, these are standard indicators from Esri. These are not outside of the WALK one. So it's going to be very, very difficult. And I think this is a good time to clear this up. It's, the model works as a performance evaluation. It's not a great way to do a lot of conceptual idea generation and that type of thing. That's all of the work that Kathleen's doing with the group and some of the other diagrams. And, and that's why I think the, what gets put into the model as far as what gets preserved in that sense or the spaces that are not associated with like housing units or, you know, standard development, that, that's a different type of design exercise than what this model can do for us. The model can do, evaluate how each one of the scenarios performs on some of those factors that we have in our comp plan. But like, place making is a really hard one to try to get into a model and go, how do you assign a metric to that? How do you assign a metric to people enjoying their spaces? I haven't figured out a way to get that into a model. That's a kind of, it's such a cool idea, a custom indicator, that we could go, hey, this is a, this is like you're scoring on a great place to live. But I, I don't know what those factors are yet.
Okay, so I think, I think it sounds like there's still, there's still job security for planners. It's not all going to be.
There's always room to improve. They automatically did great ideas. I mean, there you go.
But we're always, we're still going to need people to clean the superfund site, Harmon, so.
I wish we could just get machines to do that, actually. John, do you have any questions? We haven't heard from you yet. Try to unmute first and we will hear you.
Thanks for the presentation. I guess I, I view this as something useful, but it's not what helps us actually define the alternatives that we are trying to develop here. It helps us evaluate the alternatives. And this is a point that I think Kathleen and Kalani have both made. But I, speaking as somebody who works in a consulting firm that deals with models all the time, I get very nervous with the focus that we have on this tonight. It's so easy to get dazzled by models and focus on, on the model rather than what we're really trying to accomplish here. So I, I'm happy that, that we're working with Esri and trying these new things. But I would be very sad if this became the focus of, of our sub-community planning efforts. They help us evaluate, but they don't help us actually develop the concepts that we're trying.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, well, if, if everybody's, oh, Sarah, you still have questions?
Yeah, sorry. I know we will get to the specific questions you are asking us, but I just had a couple of additional questions that are general. One is, why, why isn't the airport included in this? That's question number one. And then question number two is actually specifically about indicators and how, if you can explain, what indicator or indicators is going to capture the jobs-housing balance, which I know is a big focus of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan?
Sure. And so the, the airport question, that was something that has come up in our community comments and in the working group that they did want to test different uses at the airport. We spoke with folks in transportation and we actually have a comp plan policy that speaks, speaks about considerations for changing land uses at the airport and that that work should be done as part of an airport master plan. And so the, the airport master plan right now is scheduled to kick off in 2024.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then the jobs-housing balance and how these indicators might capture that or?
Yeah, so some of the things that we can look at for the jobs-housing balance are obviously, we'll look at the number of jobs. So today, I think there's 17,000 jobs that are in the sub-community today. So as we play with the model and look at the different land use changes, we can evaluate whether our, our concepts are moving that number up and down. And then we'll also be looking at that population indicator and the housing units indicator. And those, those will be able to say, you know, for each of these, is it above or below the, the current BVCP land use map? Is it above or below existing conditions because we know what those numbers are? And, you know, wherever each of these scenarios falls on that scale, we'll be able to describe it with the, with the indicators.
Okay, so I just, I'm going to put a pin in that. And when we get to the actual questions about indicators, I'm really curious. I'm really going to want to understand sort of the way in which the jobs indicator can talk about what types of jobs. Because again, if we're focusing about, focusing on inclusion and diversity, this goes to what Harmon said earlier, we don't, it can't all just, well, it could be, but we don't want it to only be Class A office-based types of jobs or only retail types of jobs. We want to have, make sure that the job, so that the job indicator shouldn't be a blunt instrument. And I will just put a pin in that.
Yeah, we can talk more about that.
Okay.
Anybody else? Questions? Lupita?
Just going back to the comment that John made with regards to, you know, the outcomes of the model, the real thinking comes after what the results have come out. That's when you interpret them. If you don't know how to interpret them, they're just numbers or figures or graphs. It doesn't really matter. So my point is going to be important to interpret the results on the various simulations so that we can determine which of all the various sets of results we get is what we actually want this city to look like. So I, I think that's where you were going, John. So I'm glad that you mentioned it because to me, that's really the, the real thinking. The machine is just, you know, an automatic thing to repeat the same calculations over and over. I always think that they're useful, but they're not the smartest part of the work. So, but I think one thing that I would like to just sort of ask of the people who work with the model in terms of your experience with the, you know, with what goes beyond or behind them and, and the, and the programming. It's just give us some ideas or combinations of criteria that we can look at so that we can interpret things better. So that's sort of like the only thing that I would like.
Okay, I think Lupita froze. Let's give it a sec. Lupita, we can't hear you. You froze. Maybe take your video down and.
You know, sometimes it works to take the video off.
See if we can hear you.
I think this is probably a good time, though, which was, what Lupita was talking about as far as methodology and what those inputs are.
Sure.
And so we were fully prepared to put together a methodology report that goes in and lets you know, okay, we're pulling numbers from census information here to populate this. All of that work, but it's, it'll be part of a larger report that will come out to you guys. But we will have the methodology in there.
Okay. So does that answer your question, Lupita, or did you have more to add? Okay, I'm seeing you're saying yes. Okay, are there, David?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the CO2 emissions indicator. Is it anticipated that that would take into account that people, you know, if we have some more housing, that people might live closer to where they work? Or is it strictly looking at the building CO2 aspect? Just curious.
So right now, it's a building CO2 aspect based on use, types of uses, you know, because they're different across different uses. So it's a gross number that's put in as far as tons. The, that granularity in the vehicle miles traveled and kind of like a 15-minute. The, that granularity in the vehicle miles traveled and kind of like a 15-minute neighborhood. There are so many different calculators out there. It's, it's a bit, we're still trying to pinpoint what's, what's the good number for each one of these. But right now, no, it doesn't have that portion that has the vehicular component in it.
Okay, so a quick follow-up. If, you know, if we have a, let's say we have a teardown and rebuild and we go, we, we know what this, you know, before we do a teardown, do we get the, you know, do we get an actual CO2 analysis of the building that's being torn down? And then plug in the CO2 input from
For the new?
The new buildings so that we have that granularity and we see how the plan is, is being implemented?
So I don't think we have monitoring data on existing buildings to that level to be able to put in what their use is right now. It would have.
From before, you wouldn't have to because we'd only be looking at the areas of change. So you'd only have to go out and do the, do the inventory when, when you had a demolition and a new use coming in.
We do, there is a portion of the sub-community that we actually do have some of that data. Climate Insistence did a, a study in, I think, 2018. So we have it for some structures, not all structures in the sub-community, but it's.
It would be, one of the things that is possible is to enter in an estimated data of like a certain type. So say you have a warehouse industrial. The model gives a baseline and then on the proposals, what you do is you indicate if you're demolishing or not, redeveloping. And so I think if you could enter in, figure out a way to get an accurate assumption for some of those other building uses, you could get a kind of a relative difference in, in the change for CO2 emissions. But, you know, like anything, there's a margin of error in there, especially when you're doing those kinds of estimates. But this program is, in general, a gross numbers program. We're not gonna get to the level of like a, a site review level of detail on, you know, development units and acreage and open space and that type of thing. So.
Okay. John?
Yeah, just, just to follow up on that, in a recent meeting, maybe even the last one, we just dealt with a proposal for, for new buildings in, in the project area. And as part of that proposal, they committed a bigger area for parking services for that new building that they wanted to build. Is that commitment somehow going to be reflected in the, in the modeling that, that you're dealing with?
I'm not familiar with the project. Was this?
2400 Central in Flatiron Business Park.
So it's a mix of existing and a retrofit, right?
Well, it's a, it's a demolition of some existing buildings with replacing them new ones. But it also committed a, a number of the other buildings who were owned by the same owner to provide the parking as part of that. So I'm just wondering how that sort of commitment or if it can be dealt with in this modeling.
I think that that might have to be reflected in an existing conditions update to, you know, whatever that parking was. I think it would have to go into that portion because the model is not capable of discerning unless it has that specific of a development. You know, it doesn't, to do exactly what you're talking about, John, as far as their conditions and all of these other things. So I, I don't know, Kathleen, if you're, if the intent, maybe that's a question is, when, where's the timeline stop on, on the existing conditions for things like that and any other projects that might alter some of the data?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to think about is, you know, we have information about proposed projects, but if they're proposed and non-built, would we use that as, as like the existing? That's a, that's, that's probably a good conversation for, for for our staff team to have.
Well, glad we could help with that. Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we do the version of deliberation that we're gonna do in this non-hearing? Okay. Oh, Sarah?
Just can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be so awesome.
You gotta keep people comfortable. So it is 7:38. Let's just come back at 7:45.
Thanks. David, you look like you're driving a bus.
This is the East Boulder Subcommittee on their bus tour of all the different areas.
I recognize the photograph. It's just that you look like you're, you're driving it.
Worked out so perfect. It's really, it, it, it just looks like I'm right there. Yeah, I like going to master plans and grabbing pictures to match our subject matter.
I think it's awesome. I noticed that Kathleen did the same thing. She has a picture of the power plant in the background.
But the, but the lake in front of the power plant is outside of city limits.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Well, the city limits, I think, go right to the edge of the lake. If I, if I read, if I read the city limits maps correctly.
Is it, was it originally a lake or is it a man-made like cooling pond?
A man-made reservoir of some sort.
But the city limits don't mean much in this exercise. I mean, San Lazaro is outside of the city limits also, and that's included in the
Yes.
In the exercise, so.
Is that on the assumption that it, it will get annexed at some point?
I think that's a, a topic that people have discussed for years and it's still delicate.
Okay.
It, it gets city services there, water and sewer though.
Okay.
I realized that, I, I don't know if Harmon's listening yet, but I realized that one of the most important questions didn't get asked. I hope we can still ask one more question.
Well, now we have the interesting part of getting to think about the specifics of the indicators now that we we sort of kind of understand how they're built.
All right. So 7:45, let's get back to it. David, you seem to have a question that you wanted to ask.
Yeah, I just, I, I think we've done really well as a team not to dig into the concepts. But I think the one glaring one that people were probably wondering about was mixed-use TOD. Has there been a narrative written to describe mixed-use TOD's aspirations? Because I couldn't find that anywhere.
Oh, you know what? I will make a note to do that. What I can describe, I think, is, you know, the working group was going through the concept development phase. And they really just kind of kept moving around high-density residential and mixed-use business in that area. And described, you know, we want these two uses, but what we really want is some flexibility here as we start to think about the mobility hub and creating transit-oriented development around that intersection. And so we've created that, that fourth mixed-use category. And we, yeah, I should, we should really write a description for that as these go out.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, that would be interesting to see. I think it's, I think it looks like a really good idea. Cool. Thanks, Harmon.
Yeah, no problem. So I'd like to jump into sort of our deliberation portion of this matter. It's not a public hearing. We're not gonna be making a motion. So this is really about giving feedback to staff. We've asked a lot of questions. We've gotten on a soapbox or two. And now I think we should give staff a little bit of feedback on their, their concepts that they've outlined for us. So the, the way we're gonna give feedback is through response to the key issues, two of which we've been offered. And does anybody have any additional key issues that they want to offer? Or should we just stick with the two and give feedback based on those? Okay, I think we'll stick with the two. So let's hear feedback on the indicators to be tested during the scenario testing phase of work that have been recommended. Any thoughts? Sarah?
So not surprisingly, my big focus was on the housing component. And I wondered if we might, and again, this may be at the wrong level, but in reading through the two housing strategy reports, I wondered if what might be included in there would be indicators that would try to capture the growth. And I think I'm kind of quoting here, although I didn't put it in quotes in my notes. The desired mix of types of middle-income housing identified in the 2016 middle-income housing study that would address for-sale middle-income housing products, which is the main gap identified in that strategy. And that reflect those, the preferences of those surveyed, which included a range, and I'm just gonna list the range. I'm not advocating for one or another. Single-family homes, homes, town homes, duplexes, triplexes, all with outdoor space and at least some ownership options. So I'm, I don't know if the, if the tool can be that specific. But if we're trying to address the gap identified by the work you all have done previously, it'd be great if the indicators for the housing, housing units, household units could be sensitive enough to look for, to, to try to capture that kind of diversity.
Other feedback on the recommended indicators? John?
Well, I'll, I'll make a point that here, but I, I think I've also made it in our working group meetings that I show up at. And that is that I'm concerned that we don't have any explicit sort of measurement of affordability of industrial or light industrial space that we are so concerned with maintaining, but we're not actually measuring the affordability. We're just potentially measuring the, the supply in terms of square feet. And I'm not sure how one does that in a, in a reliable way. But it seems to me that that's a pretty important element of what we're dealing with.
Anybody else? Feedback, David?
Yeah, so this is really great work and I'm, I'm very, very interested in how this new way of, of gauging public opinion on various outcomes works with this new tool. So I think it'll be a really incredible experience to go out there with these. I do think the indicators make sense. I did also have the reaction of gee, how can we get affordability into this? As I thought about it, I also realized that our regulatory, our, our laws that regulate what we can and can't do on affordability have made it a little bit hard to give moving levers to the public to deal with, with that. We have our program in place and we can kind of say, we do. I think it would be nice if we can, during this process, send a signal to the community that affordability is very important. I just don't know how much we can do in the model. But I think it is both from the housing standpoint and the the commercial industrial standpoint, very interesting to think about how we can keep our eye on the affordability component of that while we do this modeling. I do, I also think that what Harmon was talking about earlier is really interesting. I had the same reaction. Once we start to characterize where we're at and where we're going with particular uses, I can almost envision a fairly, like a, a controlled panel of, of gee, for each use category, are we, and for each area in which that use might go, are we above, at, or below where we would like to be? And kind of, kind of have that be, be, be something that could, could change with time. I know that we're not there yet, but this model kind of gets us, moves us in that direction a little bit. And the thing I like about being able to characterize both the existing mix and the aspirations in such a way is that if we did it well, we might be able to make that a criteria-based thing in the future. We might be able to put in our land use code, if the, if we see that the needs in this particular area have dropped, we, we can actually pressure outcomes to have less of that. If, if the needs have increased, we can, we can pressure outcomes to increase that. So it just, you know, it's kind of a forward-looking idea, but I think that, that it's something that could have potential. I did think that, I did notice that perhaps transportation solutions beyond parking and walkability could be an indicator, how well it's served by mass transit and how well the car circulation might be in the different scenarios, but, but I think, yeah, the parking and walkability are very important. Let me think if I've got anything else here that I need to talk about. That's it.
Thanks, David. Are there any other planning board members who, Peter?
No. I wanted to ask if Sarah could unpack a bit of what she had just said, because I, I liked, liked it, and I want to make sure I understand it.
So.
That's appropriate.
Yeah, so what I was coming, I was coming at it through the lens of the overarching principles of Boulder Valley Comp Plan, specifically the inclusion, equity and affordability values that aren't exactly the same thing as these, these indicators. But trying to figure out how, where, where those values might show up in indicators, how we could make something very tangible. So this idea of, and I said it earlier in the meeting, can we start through this process building scenarios where the affordability of, the availability of housing and a diversity of housing that is at a diversity of, that serves a diversity of residents or potential residents and income levels, et cetera, is built into the scenario planning rather than being handled at the other end when a developer goes through the entitlement process. So I, what I was trying to convey in speaking specifically about the diversity of housing types happened to be about advancing the middle-income housing goals, which Boulder's having a really hard time meeting for a host of reasons. But I also think that, I, I don't know what the, what the subcomponents of, of the indicator for housing units would be that would allow for a determination of set-asides for permanently affordable housing. That would be for low to moderate households. But that's, what I'm trying to do is start us, start the scenario planning with affordability built in, and not just try to get to it once we're in the entitlement process 10 years from now for a particular area.
Okay, thank you very much for reiterating that. I agree with you. It'd be, I'd stand behind any attempt to do that.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry.
Sarah?
I was just going to also say that, again, that missing middle, that gap in the missing middle, which is the for-sale gap, not the rental gap, because we're billing a lot of rentals, but we need to fill that for-sale gap as well.
All right, Lupita?
Yes. So my question has to do with how much use this particular program has done. I know that Boulder is a, one of the beta testing sites, but you had other ones, and I'm wondering why have you learned from the other beta sites? To see if there's something that you've learned through them that may be useful to us if they're farther along the, the use of this program.
So.
Oh, go ahead, Kloni.
I, I, if you want to answer the question, Kathleen, I could talk a little bit about our ESRI experience and, and the variety of different sites.
And so the, the other beta cities that I've looked at have been, or areas that I've looked at have been Honolulu, Boston, and I think San Francisco was maybe the third one. And, and because this portion of the tool, this land use version of the tool is being developed sort of with us, there, there hasn't been an incredible amount. We're, we're right at the, the front edge of it, and so there hasn't been an incredible amount of time or, or testing in other places to see how they are finding successes with it or, or failures with it. I think that's part of being a, a beta city, but I think some of the, the other aspects of the tool that we may engage in the future that I think are really interesting, and we have seen some successes are the the engagement pieces and allowing community members to see the 3D models of development proposals and, and letting them kind of explore from the street level what, what the future built environments might look like. That, that's not something that we're developing at this moment, but it's, it's definitely something that I know Kalani is interested in, and it would require us to change some of our requirements for development review and things like that. But there's great, there's, there's been some, I think, great experience with having that 3D portion available to the community and allowing them to kind of comment on different projects or different plans within that platform. So that's something that, you know, I'm really interested in is, is using it as an engagement tool. And just, you know, the, the way that that rolls out and, and kind of how those different things are open for comment, I think will be a, a learning lesson as we go through. I don't know, Kloni, if you had other?
Yeah, I would say that I, I, there's about 40 cities worldwide that are using the program. What I've noticed in the ones in the US is, like Kathleen was saying, the land use portion is brand new. We are, from what ESRI has told me, is we are the ones that they're actively modeling and making improvements on this, because we're the ones using this the most right now for this particular aspect of the program. But the program has four aspects to it. Has development current planning options to visualize that. It has long-range planning capabilities. That's what we're doing with Kathleen's group and area planning, you can do that in it. There's a community engagement portion. Other cities, what I've noticed from San Francisco to Boston was their, their current planning and their visualization, community engagement use of this tool, they use that more than we use, we're currently using it. We're using it for the scenario portion right now. But like Kathleen was saying, we are looking at what are the possibilities of this program to use it across the board? And it, it's just, right now, the, the launch of this software, we are very staffing, right now, we're focused on this particular aspect. As this kind of gets settled, we may start to look at the other aspects of how do we operationalize the engagement portion. There's a, there's a bit of management to that that we would have to consider. How do we do the, the current planning portion? So as we get to that, we'll use that more, but I'd say from what I've learned, I really like how the other cities are using. They're helping people visualize the changes to the built environment in their current planning too, and I like that part. But what we're doing is right on the edge of what ESRI, it's all brand new, so it's been a learning experience for all of us as we go through.
So at this, I hope, you know, actually, this is kind of along the lines of what I would wanted to hear, because even in beta testing, you can get some sense of what things have worked better for some people. And even from that, the, the feedback will come from the people. Why is it better for them? And then that, that's a piece of information that the, the model, the piece of equipment you're testing will not tell you. So really, the information comes from the other users. So it is, it's interesting, you mentioned Boston and San Francisco, because I live in both areas, and I pictured the two cities, and they have a lot less to work with in terms of movement parts. Believe it or not, we have a lot more space and, and even in the places that you can move things. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering, in, in some of the commonalities that we do have with the cities where you may see something that we can really leverage from what they, what you guys are learning from it. And I will imagine it's not so clear yet, but as you guys do this, right, you're looking at your parameters you're working with, I said, which ones are the things that are most closer to Boulder? And the engagement piece, I suspect that eventually when we get more into that, we might have that more in common. You know, so anyways, this is just speculation, but I, I think that would be one other piece that we would really want to push, because I think we really do want to, you know, to hear from the community and make this, you know, a, a very effective use of the tool. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other planning board members with some feedback? Sarah, is there anybody before Sarah who, I think we already got some feedback? Anyone else? Okay, what we're looking for is feedback on the indicators that are being recommended. Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you. This is sort of a similar issue about diversity that has to do with jobs, and I just, I think I brought it up earlier. If there are way, if there are inputs into the jobs indicator that can try to capture a diversity of jobs, that would, I think, would be really valuable. I don't know how you would, I mean, I, if I understood Kalani, if you imagine a real, a retail business that's going, of X amount, that's going to be 10 jobs, and if you imagine an office of X amount, that's going to be X times two jobs. So the tool, I guess the tool exists, but I, I don't know how you, how you figure out what's the, what's a positive and productive balance for imagining the future going forward. But if you guys can figure that out, I think it would be really helpful to try to be capturing a good balance of different types of jobs so that we can not lose manufacturing jobs, or not lose food service jobs, or not lose entrepreneur, small business jobs, that kind of thing.
Peter?
I wanted to insert something that part of this should also be a survey of the manufacturing businesses to determine if the least of their problems is what we're trying to address, and if they're going to be leaving Boulder regardless of all of this moving chairs around on the Titanic deck, that.
Are we really thinking, Peter?
No, but I think there are business realities for these businesses, and what we're trying to fix for them may not be their biggest problem. And that would be an important input.
Anybody else with any feedback on the indicators? John?
Yeah, just not, not to pound it into the ground, but with respect to the affordability of industrial, commercial space, I think Dave, David made that point excellently. My concern is that, my, the perception is that anytime you make a change or build a new building or knock down an existing building and build something new in its place, the rent goes up. And, and it seems to me that that is such a central issue for us that we should be able to address that in some way to describe at least what is likely to happen and how we intend to deal with it. Because that is an important element of, an important objective for us is to maintain affordable, commercial, industrial space.
Peter?
I just want to maybe put another point on what I said, that the people who work at perhaps these industrial facilities, do they live in Boulder? And why, why or why not? And that also drives the business owner's decision of relocating to be closer to their employee base. And so this really is part and parcel with the housing conversation. If we're going to champion affordable and maintaining industrial, we need to understand that a million-dollar average home price may not be what works for the transmission mechanic crew.
Okay. Any other feedback, Lisa?
Just kind of going off of, of what I said earlier when I asked staff a question. Something that I don't see captured in the indicators is sort of adaptability. You know, so how, as we move forward, as we see, you know, kind of how it's developed, what happens with East Boulder sub-community? In what ways have we locked, are we finding that we've locked ourselves in and we can't allow more creative uses? And, and I'm not thinking like huge things like massively changing the zoning or anything like that, but who's coming forward and saying, gosh, I really wish that I could have an artist studio of this type in this area, and then we find, oh, sorry, it's not zoned for that, you can't. Because I think that would, that's important for the vibrance of that area moving forward, and also for our ability to respond to changing needs that we just can't anticipate now. So that's another indicator that I would love to kind of see tracked over time.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm just going to weigh in on the first key issue, and then we'll move on to the second, which is about community engagement. So I think as a specific comment, I see that we have three indicators, CO2 emissions, walk access and parking required, which all kind of beat around the bush of necessarily getting people out of the single occupant vehicle to commute. And talk maybe a bit about vehicle miles traveled, but I'm just, you know, thinking that if we're going to add an indicator, VMT or a single-vehicle use occupancy could be that. And then my general comment is that I think that to the extent that this is a dry run for city council and, and just for generally making this presentation in the future, one of the things that, that I really got a, a sense of from the planning board's questions during this matter is just that there's confusion as to how this tool actually works. What are its inputs? What are its outputs? And how it's going to be used to influence the planning process over time? And so when you use phrases in, in the staff report, like staff has been working with ESRI to customize the indicators in response to Boulder's specific land use code and measurable targets of city strategies and plans, and then talk about how the 12 indicators minus the one on walk access are just standard indicators that, you know, come out of ESRI. You know, it, it's, it's hard to reconcile what's written with what was said, and I think it would be good if, if we just, if we had a clearer picture of how customizable this is, and, and how much feedback is going to get plugged in, and, and how well this tool is envisioned to, to be usable in the future for, for taking feedback information and, and using it to customize our land use code and our uses. Okay, so let's move on to the, the planning board feedback on recommended engagement strategy for the next phase of work. Again, we're, we're here to provide feedback to staff, so I'd like to limit additional questions in time unless you have something that you, you need to know before you can make your feedback known. So what, do we have any planning board members who want to give feedback on this around community engagement?
I just had, I had a question comment, which is, it wasn't clear to me if the mailers are going to go out to the entire city or just to the neighbor, to the neighborhoods around the East Boulder community, sub-community planning area.
Steph, you can answer that.
Um, I don't think we've made a decision about that yet, but I'd love to hear your recommendation.
Okay, so that's, so my recommendation would that it should go out to the entire city if it could. This is a major portion of town. And a lot of people, and, and because there's so few residents who actually live in that part of town, you're not getting necessarily a ton of feedback from a hugely diverse community, a part of the community, and it's most, it's the 25 people or so who've been working on the working group, which is awesome, and their commitment to this process is great, but I feel like the whole city should have the opportunity to participate in this next stage.
That's great, thanks.
Sarah, I might just chime in a little bit on that.
Sarah, I might just chime in a little bit on that. That's one of those things we're going to have to weigh via cost. I mean, we may be able to do that through like the community newsletter and some other digital ways. But, but it is pretty costly to mail to all addresses within the city. So again, we take the comment and we can think about how to do that. But it's going to be one of those things we're going to have to try to figure out how to do effectively.
So I just think, I understand, and I just think that given the rationale for mailers, which are that there are lots of, there are people who are not online and are not plugged into city processes. The mailer serves a really important purpose, purpose of making, of giving the opportunity to more voices to be heard.
Certainly.
So I'm going to call on Lisa and then Lupita.
So just off of that around community engagement. And I'm not sure who's supporting this project, but I would just strongly encourage you to definitely put in the community newsletter and also maybe route that to a really nicely designed landing page. And I would find a way in plain English to communicate to the folks landing there who are already engaged and encouraged and bothering to click through and figure out what's going on. To really understand all the wonderful work that John has done and others have done on that subcommittee. I think a lot of times, things like that will feel very new to someone and be very frightening. And if you can find a way to just very clearly explain to them all the work that's already happened and all the things that have been discussed. It can really alleviate some of that angst that you kind of can get from the community where they get scared by their project. And they may still, you know, not like parts of it or oppose it, but they'll be more informed on what they like and what they don't like and the work that's come before. So I just know sometimes when you're in a project, it feels obvious, you know, like, how does anyone not know? But I would daylight that as much as you can and make it as, as easy for people to find as possible if they decide it's something they want to engage around.
Great, Lupita?
Yes, my comment had to do kind of along the lines of looking at different modalities to reach different demographics. And I know that some ways are more effective than others. So for example, the city now has a Spanish resources page, webpage in the city that, you know, some information can go there. But certainly there are other ways that you can do still some more direct dissemination of information. And even the city has community connectors programs. So there's a number of different ways that we can get information to communities. And I would be very, very much interested in making sure that we get feedback from San Lassado community, given that they're right in the middle of this, you know, this, this area. Another, another area that I was thinking is important is, is getting feedback from, like I said, some of the younger demographics in the city. So that they may not be that easy to, to reach. And I don't know how to, you know, how to do it. But I'm hoping that just by thinking about it, we can come out with ways, or you know, you can come out with ways to reach out to them. And so that, those are my two points regarding community engagement.
That's a great point, Lupita. We do work with various organizations. I know one way we've done in the past is working with the chambers, young professionals on, on questions like this and they, that they've been super helpful. And so I'm sure that there are others too.
And piggybacking on Lupita's idea of different modalities, you know, I think just getting creative, you've already shown a lot of creativity in the different ways that you're reaching out to get this out to the community. But, you know, I could imagine something even, you know, crazy like a drive-in movie night kind of thing, where you do the PowerPoint as a drive-in movie. And people who don't have internet, you know, they could pull up picnic blankets to make it clear that drive-in doesn't mean you need a car. But that kind of thing where they can do social distancing outside could be a nice spring night next year. You know, that kind of thing. But I like your, I think there's been a lot of good community engagement already done and the direction you're going is good. And that's my feedback. Anybody else? Peter first and then David.
There's something I said before and not totally in jest, but given that it's hard to break through to the noise. And I mentioned that there's a ad firm, Mondo Robot, that are relocated out in the shopping center where I know one of Harmon's favorite food trucks is Dos Bros. And, and Jose's meat shop, Black Belly. But he's been saying that they would volunteer to help brand this place as Beast. And if you get a name like that and you get some things going on where people are like, what's going on with the beast? But, you know, get it whimsical and, and take advantage of some of the talent out there and give it an identity. Give it something that it's not the Pearl Street Mall, it's not the West End, it's not Whittier or Mapleton. It's not even Table Mesa, it's Beast. I mean, I'm not saying you go with that, but get creative, do something, you know? People start talking about it. Right now, East Boulder sub-community, what? I'm too busy, I don't know what's going on, what are you talking about? That's it, done.
David, it's, it's your turn.
Yeah, I, I'll just say that I think that's a fantastic point, Peter. I think when, when we can take advantage of times where we can make Boulder special and really shine, that's great. And this is one of those, one of those opportunities. I did want to just kind of add a little bit of spice to what people said about how to make sure the public can handle all this. And I think if a questionnaire is going to be used to collect feedback after going through the 3D model, which it looks like it'll be questionnaire, it's going to be, how those questions are raised are going to be very important. And I'm sure you'll put lots of thought into that. But I, I know that it's going to be a key to get good, getting good questions to try to capture the kind of stuff you want to get about the indicators. And I also just wanted to go back to the deliverables. I know that we're in the, where do we, who do we want to be? And then we're going to be in the, where do we, how do we get there phase after this? I just wonder, we spent a lot of time on the land use plan. And I don't know if, if we're wanting in this phase to get where we want to be with the connection plan and the recommendations matrix, which are the other two major components of the final deliverable. But if, if that's the case, then it, you know, we need to, there should be some thought into how the, this phase will, will inform those other portions of the final deliverable. That's about it.
Anybody else want to give feedback? Thank you, David. John?
Yeah, just briefly, I support all the points made by my colleagues here on PB regarding getting the entire city to participate. Because I, I, my perception is that so far, the participation has generally been dominated by, by people with commercial interests in the area, developers and the commercial landowners there, which I think is fine, they should be involved, they have a lot at stake. But they're the ones who've been showing up at a lot of these meetings. And, and it's easy for other people not to. And I think therefore we have to try extra hard to get the rest of the population of Boulder involved in this.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I think that's good enough for, for tonight. As far as the feedback that we were asked to provide. And thank you for, Steph, for a thorough presentation and a lot of patience with all the questions that we had. John, you want to jump back in for a minute?
Yeah, on a separate topic related to this. So when you're done with your wrap-up of, of our specific comments here, I just have a, another comment.
So, well, is your comment part of this matter?
It pertains to the, to the role of this effort in dealing with the airport.
Well, is it something you want to provide feedback to staff on or is it part of our debrief?
Well, I think something for staff.
Then go ahead now.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Kathleen, you, you mentioned that, that there's a master plan for the airport that is planned for 2024 or something like that, if I understood correctly.
That's right.
I'm just trying to figure out how that is supposed to interact with our sub-community planning here, given that this is part of the sub-community and it's a major, a significant area that we're dealing with. So it seems to me, and maybe we aren't going to sort it out tonight, there needs to be some coherent way of making sure that there aren't two separate unrelated efforts going on, dealing with the same land.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely agree. And I think, you know, some of the discussion that was had at a recent working group meeting was really about, I think a couple of members brought up really the viability of proposing land use changes at the airport when we know that those are unlikely to take place in the next 20 years and how that may set unrealistic expectations for the community. Or it may, you know, looking at kind of these performance numbers or performance indicators, it could really, you know, if we turn the whole airport into housing, it would really sort of skew that number and make it look like we're meeting our goals in the next 20 years when we know that that's not on the, the horizon of this, of this plan. But I do, I think it's, I think it is a topic that a lot of community members are really interested in tackling right now and as a part of this process. And we can, you know, transportation has been playing a big role in the project and will continue to play a big role. So how we address that may evolve. But I think, you know, the, the latest message is really about, we, we have the policy that says land use changes related to the airport are addressed in that airport master plan.
Well, I mean, I don't mean to get into the guts of, of that decision, but maybe we should exclude the airport from this sub-community area planning effort then. But I, I think we need to be straightforward about what's happening and how it's going to happen.
Okay, thanks for that additional feedback, John. All right, well, I am going to offer the staff a chance to say, see ya. I think we've, we've held you long enough and I hope you appreciate the feedback that we've offered to you and look forward to the continuation of this planning process. Thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is, as we said, you know, we're at the, the front end, front edge of the, the technology. And your feedback is really helpful. And I think it also kind of helps us think about how we can translate and interpret some of the, the data that we get to make it really digestible for community members and help, you know, inform decisions. So that's, that's really the goal of, of this piece of the scope of work. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to a meeting debrief and the calendar, or well, sorry, first, since the agenda was a matters item, we're still in matters. So are there any matters from the planning board? Members who want to talk to us about things you're doing, subcommittees, questions, issues?
This may be a calendar question, but I'm just, I'd love some input from Cindy about any view down the road as to how long we're likely to continue to be doing online versus in-person.
You can unmute Cindy.
At least to the end of the year.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Your clear answer, appreciate that. Any matters from planning board? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to jump over to the planning director, so that's staff.
Nothing from staff, unless Cindy, you have any?
Just, did everyone see the addition of the October 22nd meeting?
Yeah.
It's a joint meeting with Landmarks Board, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a particular topic? I didn't see that.
Oh, I may not have put that in there, Charles. I can bring it up, but you know offhand, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's a joint hearing around the Episcopal, partial redevelopment of the Episcopal church site on Canyon and 13th.
Presbyterian, the Presbyterian.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm surrounded by churches down here, so I know all the churches.
Wrong denomination.
There's a place for people who get those things wrong, Charles. Lisa, I saw you, you had something?
Oh, I just said St. John's.
Oh, okay, good.
And I was like, wait, but it's on the other, we're good.
Great. All right, so nothing else? Anything from Hella, from the city attorney?
Nothing from me.
Thank you. All right, then moving on to our meeting debrief, does anyone want to debrief anything from tonight?
I thought it was a really interesting opportunity. And I think the challenge will be not to get caught up in the technology. The opportunity that technology offers as an end unto itself.
You're getting thumbs up from John Gerstle, I agree too. Okay.
I'll just, I'll just add that I think it was great that, how people kind of avoided going into the details of those maps. I had lots of little questions and of course I was tempted to ask them. But I think that that's really, it's really part of the working group process. And it's good that we didn't try to micromanage all that and try to get an answer to why every little square on the map might be a certain way. So kept us, I think it kept us focused on what we were asked. That was good.
Yeah, it's a pretty good board. Lisa?
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate all the work from the committee and all the time and hours that John specifically has put in. You know, it really shows in the staff presentation. So staff, fantastic, and also volunteers from the community putting their time in.
Lupita?
Yeah, I'm coming, I think maybe I spoke about this earlier. It is for all of us to look at the, you know, the different parameters that the, the program comes through with and think of maybe clustering some of this so that we can get at some of the information we really want. Because, you know, one specific criteria, criterion may not be sufficient. So some of the more deeper, interesting questions for us may be embedded in combining some of this criteria. Does that make sense?
And I think that to some extent that, there was a graphic where Steph really did a neat job of lining up the different indicators and then the different priorities in our comp plan and then showing the lines about which criteria or which, which comp plan policies and goals were, were measured by the different indicators. So that's, it's built in, it's pretty cool. All right, then calendar checks, Cindy?
Um, we have a meeting for the next few weeks. We've got one next week, the 24th. Just have one item on there. It's the Waldorf School, I believe, right, Charles? And then we have a meeting.
Actually, just a heads up that maybe moving to the 17th, we're trying to see if we can resolve some utility issues. But that's potential.
Me.
So Cindy.
And I think next week is actually Macy's, isn't it?
It is.
Oh, it is, you're right, Macy's is. I apologize. So next week is Macy's and October 1st was supposed to be the Waldorf School, right?
Would we potentially get October 1st rescheduled as a hearing if Waldorf needs to be pushed to the third Thursday?
Yeah, if Waldorf needs to be pushed to the 15th of October, then we would cancel the meeting of the first.
Okay, and was the material that we were given months and months ago, the glossy physical packet for Macy's, is that material still good? Or is, or has got it? We can still use that for reviewing the project? Okay, great. So everybody, if you didn't throw it away over the last nine months or whatever, or Lisa never got it because she wasn't. But Lisa, you need to call Brian Bowen and ask him to give, give you his.
There you go.
Packet. Brian Bowen.
Lisa, Brian's legendary for keeping them all. Lisa, Brian's legendary for keeping them all.
David has his too.
Who does?
David. All the cool kids, all the cool kids will have it.
They'll have them at your fingertips, it's amazing.
If, if I were at home, mine would be right next to me too, when I went into the office. We're all waiting for Macy's.
Exciting one.
Excited, Macy's this weekend.
Macy's is next weekend. Speaking of, I did get some information about your land use code books updates. Here it is. So we just found out that, we just received a box of updates in the mail just last week. They are sitting in Park Central and I am allowed to go back into Park Central next week. So I'm going to take a look and see what we have. And they have not been shipped to us at all this entire time.
Wow.
So, yikes. So we'll see what we've got. So, that's what I, yeah. So a big box is waiting there. So we'll take a look.
So regarding October 1st, my, I had a flight scheduled for that day, which I thought would mean that I would then be able to be in the planning meeting. That flight got consolidated into a later flight because your travel's crazy right now. So I will not be at the October 1st meeting if it proceeds.
Maybe we won't have one.
But maybe we won't have it, which would work out great for me, but just heads up.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All good. All right, well, thank you guys for a lot of thoughtful work tonight. And again, thanks to Steph and thanks to Jean for moderating. Appreciate everybody, I'm going to gavel us out. We're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.